Good evening. The January 19, 2023 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Mr. Mulmar.
Here. Let the record show that Mr. Sedana was working in the city today. He's on his way. He'll be late. And also, Mr. Harris is tied up at work, too, when he'll be late. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of tonight's notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School #11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. De La Pietro, could you please read the closed session statement?
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personal matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. In addition, the Board will review their self-evaluations. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trebowser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We will, the Board will now retire into closed session. Before I ask the Board to rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence, I'd just like to take this moment to have everybody keeping their thoughts and prayers. Larry Malosha, Mr. Malosha passed away on December 25. He served as a Board member for 10 years. He was devoted, dedicated, public servant. After he left the Board, he still continued to volunteer. He had nothing but, you know, the best thoughts of the students and worked very hard for them. He had a very wit sense of humor about him. Anybody who knew him and served with him knew that Larry was not afraid to make fun of himself. And I'm sure everybody who knew him has a lot of stories and memories, and I just ask that everybody, please keep Larry and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Please rise for salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
Some motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bourdain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Mr. Mulmar?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you. Mr. President, for the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids: On December 20, 2022, IFB 23-23 Student Transportation Services General Ed, and on January 11, 2023, IFB 23-24 Student Transportation Services for General Ed.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative from Woodbridge High School, Rochelle Estenfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. During her tenure at Woodbridge High School, Rochelle has displayed an unwavering commitment to her education. Because of her hard work and perseverance, she is in the top 2% of her graduating class with an impressive 4.1 GPA. In addition to a stellar academic record, Rochelle has many notable extracurricular accomplishments. She is the captain of the varsity track and field team, secretary of the National Honor Society, secretary of the French Honor Society, and a member of the Science National Honor Society. This fall, Rochelle will major in chemistry at Harvard University. It is her goal to pursue a career as a pharmacist. Rochelle, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. I just want to introduce the activity lists for the different schools. At School 1, Grade 4 met with Woodbridge Middle School Heroes and Cool Kids. On December 22, as part of the Community of Caring, teachers awarded students for acts of kindness and for displaying mobby manners. Grade 2 participated in the Grinch Kindness Challenge throughout the month of December by completing daily kindness activities. On December 23, the PTO provided games and snacks for the students' holiday party. All students were able to shop for holiday gifts for their families through the PTO Holiday Gift Shop. And lastly, students participated in holidays around the world. At Schools 4 and 5, classes participated in coding activities during Computer Science Education Week. The PTO hosted Cookies with Santa. The Winter Chorus Concert was held on January 12 at Avonale Middle School. Grade 5 Dare Graduation will be held in January, and staff members donated mittens to the mitten tree for students in need. At School 9, the December STEAM Project had students working with National Honor Society students from John F. Kennedy High School. The Grand Faloons presented an assembly on recycling, and the Winter Chorus Concert was held January 12 at JFK High School. At School 11, classes participated in coding activities during the week of December 5. The Chorus performed their holiday concert on December 13 and also performed at Woodbridge Center Mall on December 16. The PTO hosted Family Movie Night on December 14. The faculty members sponsored families for the holiday season. The PBSIS Committee conducted monthly, respectful, responsible, and ready raffles, and the second grade teachers partnered with Woodbridge High School to work with tomorrow's teachers. At School 14, the school ran an extended school day program in November and December. The PFG Holiday Shop and Evening Event was a huge success. Students and staff wore their Choose Kind shirts to show continued support of PBSIS. Students of the Month were honored with a pizza lunch. Grade 4 students participated in the Heroes and Cool Kids program with students from Ford's Middle School, and the winter concert was held at Ford's Middle School on January At School #19, the school counselor created a boys mentoring program in collaboration with a counselor from JFK High School to develop a program where high school students come to the school and mentor the selected boys monthly. The school has partnered with the Woodbridge Township Mayor and Council to install mini food pantries. One will be installed outside the building located by the parking lot, another by the VFW on New Brunswick Avenue, and one at the Sunny View Oval Apartments. Non-perishable items will be located inside the pantries for anyone in our community to take. You can also fill up the pantry to give back to our community. The Chorus and Band had their winter concert on December 21 at Ford's Middle School. The staff ran a Toys for Tots program for approximately 35 students in need. On January 19, students participated in a Glow and Grow Day to celebrating the students' academic growth. Each student will receive a celebratory certificate, and then each class will participate in a dance slash glow party in the all-purpose room. At School 25, classes participated in coding activities during Computer Science Education Week from December 5 to December 9. Monthly PBSIS events were held to recognize students being respectful, responsible, and kind. Grade 4 classes worked with the Ford's Middle School Heroes and Cool Kids. The Ford's Fire Department brought their fire safety trailer to discuss fire safety and prevention on December 12, December 14, and December 15. The Winter Chorus and Band Concert was held in school and at Ford's Middle School for families on December 19. Darius the Therapy Dog visited classes on December 20. At Avonale Middle School, the Annual Day of Giving was celebrated on Tuesday, December 12. The faculty donated and delivered over 400 gifts to 12 different families in need. Girls' basketball finished in third place. The Boys' Basketball Team was the district championship. During the month of January, Colonia High School and Woodbridge High School Guidance Counselors have been presenting information on scheduling courses to current eighth graders, and the Winter Chorus and Band Concert was held on Wednesday, January 11. At our own Woodbridge High School, Save Our Strays Club hosted a pet adoption event, and there were more than 30 animals adopted out to their forever homes. On November 18, approximately 50 Woodbridge High School students participated in an annual high school leadership conference hosted by Keene University's Diversity Council on Global Education and Citizenship. Mayhardeep Carr, a senior at our school, was announced as one of the recipients for the Joy Prescott Humanitarian Award for Student Leadership and Dedication. Three band members were selected to participate in the CJMEA Honors Symphonic Band. The Winter Guard will host the inaugural Maine Home Competition on February 18. The Drama Club held an outstanding one-act performance of Arsenic and Old Lace in our auditorium on Tuesday, January 10. The Spring Musical Matilda will be held from March 21 through March 26, with a free senior citizens matinee on Tuesday, March 21 at 4:00 p.m. The Woodbridge Girls' Soccer Team were White Division Champions. They were 16 wins, four ties, and one loss in the season. Christina McNish, Tiffrey Paredes, and Ella Tom were all named All Division. Taylor Pazulich was named All Division and All Conference. Mohamed Qassim was named All Division in Boys' Cross Country. Marco de Silva and Mark Walter were both named All Division in Boys' Soccer. Coach Anthony Clark was named the White Division Coach of the Year for Boys' Soccer. Kenza Karbooch and Stephanie Berezford were both named All Division in Girls' Tennis. Aviva Palms and Ashley Torrick were both named All Division in Girls' Volleyball. Caleb Barahona, A.J. Bosch, Antonio Rosado, and Julian Tavares were all named First Team All Division in Football. Brian Anderson, Lazarus Lisoho, and Dennis Smith were all named to the Second Team. Caleb Barahona was also named the Second Team All Area by the Home News Tribune and Second Team All Group 4 by the Star Ledger. A.J. Bosch was named First Team All Area by the Home News Tribune. Antonio Rosado was named Second Team All Area by the Home News Tribune, and Julian Tavares was named Second Team All Area by the Home News Tribune and Third Team All Group 4 by the Star Ledger. This winter, our cheerleaders came in second place in the Red Division at the GMC Cheer Performance Championships. The Township Ice Hockey Team is currently seven wins, zero ties, and one loss on the season, and enjoyed our first-ever win over St. Joseph's High School by a 6-1 score. Sophomore Tatiana Camilo ranked 10th all-time in the Greater Middlesex Conference history with a triple jump of 35 feet, 9.25 inches.
Thank you, Rochelle, for your detailed report. You're more than welcome to join us for the rest of the evening, unless you have something more pressing you have to do.
I do have finals to study for. Got to keep up that hard reputation.
There you go.
That's right.
You go.
That's right.
Thank you so much. And the Board would like to recognize Dr. Lotman, principal at Woodbridge High School, and thank him for taking time out of his busy schedule to be with us. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of December 2022.
Mr. President, I present the following month of reports: Student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at the Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per regulation, 1100D comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you've completed your opportunity to speak.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. Before I start, I, too, would like to praise the efforts of, I'm sorry, Larry. He was a great guy. I remember him well, and you're right, he had quite the personality and did a lot for this Board and this district. So thank you for recognizing him. I'm sure it's more than well-deserved. I'd also like to thank the prior Board for their service, and welcome the new Board to taking over and looking forward to working with you. That said, the only thing I have on athletics and curriculum on the agenda is that I note, and this is an, pardon me, is praising of the fact that we still differentiate in this school district, that we can recognize the girls' basketball and the boys' basketball. We haven't gotten that far woke that we can't still say there's a difference between boys and girls, and we honored it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Anybody else on the agenda this evening? Seeing nobody? Superintendent's agenda, Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations this evening?
Mr. President, I have 26 items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion?
Some motion.
Motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Mr. President, I am staying on item #26 on the name of Rutgers, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Policy and Planning, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Mulmar?
Mr. Harris?
Dr. Massimino and I spoke earlier this evening. The 20, excuse me, 2023-2024 student calendar is not on this agenda. Typically, around the months of January or February, the Board publishes the student calendar for next school year. Dr. Massimino and I spoke. The committee will have it prepared and ready for the February Board meeting, so just stay tuned for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Curriculum, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction prevents, presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Finance and Insurers, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain? Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Security and School Safety, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Security and School Safety Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools present the following one item, and I move for the adoption of foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Trebowser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Athletics and Extracurricular, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Any questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator present the following 10 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Any comments from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I just want to highlight these 10 items for the public, not one by one, but en masse here. Really, in two groups here, we're purchasing, which was an exciting moment here, purchasing the furniture and equipment and supplies for the large expansions onto Schools 25 and 28, which were part of the 2020 referendum. Both of those projects, if you've had the opportunity to drive by, those two schools are enclosed and, you know, nearing completion, and now we're ready for the furniture to be delivered, so it's an exciting moment. The administration tells us that the projects are both on time and on budget, and we look forward to those opening September of 2023. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Transportation, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 48 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulmar?
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations this evening?
I actually do, Mr. President, and I want to, if I can, just read you guys an agenda item that I'd recommend that someone make a motion for. There'd be a second, and it would just require a simple majority, no need for a roll call. That the Board of Education hereby 1. authorizes the law firm of Methfesslin Werble to settle the matter of Frost versus Praxair Inc., Civil Action #3:17-CV-03612-MAS-TJB in the amount of $150,000; 2. directs the Superintendent of Schools and Board Attorney to negotiate an acceptable form of settlement agreement that reflects this amount; and 3. authorizes the Board President and Board Secretary to execute the settlement agreement once its terms have been negotiated in accordance with the aforementioned provisions of this action.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Perez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is that Mr. Bush?
That's all, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Seeing none, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I just have one item.
Mr. Harris?
Unless anyone wants to go ahead of me? No? All right. The administration put this out recently on our social media accounts that kindergarten registration is around the corner, beginning on February the 13th. All kindergarten registration is online. Right now, the applications are not up, but they will be up and ready for parents to sign up their kids on February the 13th and no earlier. I think Board Presidents of the past have said this, that registering early is better for our district, the sooner you get in, the better. That helps us plan for the following school year, whether transportation routes, to number of teachers needed, to classroom placements, and so on and so forth. So the sooner you register, the better. So if, whether you're a kindergarten parent or prospective kindergarten parent or otherwise, please share that with your friends and family. I know a lot of times on the social media, a number of different parents are asking when kindergarten registration begins, so please let them know that it will begin on February the 13th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there, is there any other new business? Okay, seeing none, we will now open the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of township in which you reside, as per Regulation 1100D. Comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you've completed your opportunity to speak.
Good evening again, Tom Maris. Pardon me. Ford's, New Jersey. I think everybody is aware that the mayor and the First Council Ward, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, forgive me, have put out a notice that the administration has said that they are giving up on developing the 94 apartment units, which would have gone on to the school property on Ross Street. While they are claiming that that's their decision, I'm sure it is in part, and I give them full credit for that decision, by the way, also this board's decision, because it is, after all, your property, ergo, the public's property. But I think that is the right decision, and I commend all that made that decision on reaching that decision. I think we can use that property for better purposes, and who knows? At some point in time, there may be need for that to be an adjunct to the school system in a new building dedicated to education, rather than some developer's idea of putting 94 apartments up there. So again, kudos to you, the mayor, and the Redevelopment Agency on reaching that decision. I'm sure many in the township are happy that you have. Which brings me to another subject, I just touched on it. I know there is a need in the township because of the extraordinary cost to bring back the children that require special needs or have special needs for education, and I know it's gotten to be an overwhelming cost. And even there, I know that the McCormick administration has reached out and is trying to work with the board to secure a location, or perhaps more than one location, to facilitate the education of those children. And again, I applaud you for that effort, and I hope to be, in some way or another, instrumental in helping you to achieve that, as well as the mayor, because I think it really is essential that we bring the kids back to here, and we educate them, and cut those costs, and make sure that they're educated properly. Something else I want to bring up is, and I know this is not going to be very popular, but given what is going on in the state with the right to carry, I would suggest that the school at least consider, discuss it amongst yourselves, perhaps firearm training for children. I know a lot of people are going to be guessed that I'm saying that, but if we don't train people to respect something, to work with something, to understand it, then we leave them out in the dust. And a lot of parents have actually learned, if you watch what has gone on with the NRA, from some of the children have taken firearms training, and they've gone back and told the parents, "You're not doing it right." But again, this should be something that we don't have to worry about with kids showing up with guns in school. Let them know what a gun is, what it really, it's a tool, like any other tool. Properly handled, it is just that, it's a tool, for whatever purpose it is designed to do. Mishandled, that's where we have a problem. And I would hope the school would at least consider looking at some of the organizations that would be more than willing, I'm sure, to help augment or train, educate parents and/or teachers, I'm sorry, well, yeah, parents, teachers, and/or students in proper gun safety. Finally, there's legislation, as I understand it, and I'm not totally familiar with the bill, I'm going to look into it, that was put forth by, all I can say, a woke professor that now wants to have the legislation to outlaw, if you will, free speech, at least on the part of anybody that is non-woke. And that's being highly publicized. You may or may not be aware of it. If you're not, please look into it. I don't have the specific bills, but I will the next time we meet. And that individual is saying people like Tuckel Carlson and a host of other, primarily Fox News commentators, should be banned from speaking. I don't think any of us want that in any way, shape, or form. Even somebody like Mr. Dombrowski, who I, and I do apologize for calling him what I call him, but he has a right to free speech, as we all do, and that should never be stipled, because once we stiple anybody's free speech, we're no longer a free democracy, we're no longer a republic. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris.
Hi, Bruce Banco-Avenel. I'd like to thank Mr. Mulnar for a perfect response to last meetings where the gentleman came in and was upset about a certain group marching in the parade. That was awesome. Also, last meeting I came to, Tom Maris asked the question, and the board told them that they already answered it already. I believe that a person should be able to ask a question 100 times, and if you should have to answer it each and every time, who knows, you might come up with a different answer, and some people never heard the question before. So I just hope that you can answer their questions, even if it's repeated. There's some racism going on in the schools. I was told that the black kids are being able to use the N-word and call white kids crackers, and nobody says anything. I don't understand how that can happen. Maybe you guys can look into it. There was an incident where a girl was being harassed, being called a Jewish rat, and she couldn't take it no more, and with five minutes left in the class, she told the kid to shut up. She ended up with in-school suspension for disrupting a class. When it comes to sex ed, my kid was asked what binary, binary is in history class, what does that have to do with history? And I was, what was the last one? When it comes to sex ed, the board told one of the parents last week that it's a state law, and that they should have to go to a state meeting to bring up their issues. Why can't the Board of Ed go to the state and fight for what the parents are fighting That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Banco. As far as the board going down, look, the people out there, you're the constituents of the governor and the state. And my, and this is just me speaking personally from my point of view, I mean, us going down there, I mean, I think you guys are more than, I mean, we have to basically, we teach the curriculum that they pass and tell us that we have to teach. We have to find a way to put that curriculum out there for our students. But I guess Mr. Bush made those comments, you know, and it is true. I mean, if you're going to change anything, it's going to take the parents. I mean, we're nine people. We go down there, they're not going to look at me any different than you because I'm on the Board of Ed. You know, you got hundreds of parents, thousands of parents in a school. That's where the masses are to go down there to protest. Mr. Bush, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, I mean, it's not the role of the Board of Education to delve deep into advocacy. It's just not. I mean, it's the role of a board to be involved in governing the school district, and if there's a concern that you have, we were just directing constituents to wherever it was that they were, to the appropriate, you know, body. Our board is responsible for following all kinds of state requirements. These are just ones that happened to have been highlighted in recent days, especially the national dialogue, which I understand that some people are concerned about, but there's many issues that this, without even speaking to board members, I can say that there are many issues that the board may take, individual board members, the board as a whole, may take issue with, but it's not our job to push back. That's why you have a state legislator, that's why state legislatures, legislators, excuse me, that's why you have a governor, that's why the citizenry is responsible for, you know, voting in elections, because when there are issues that are concerning to them, there's an opportunity to speak out there, and of course, there's public hearings for different aspects of curriculum or other actions that various state agencies, not the Department of Education, may take, and it's your role or prerogative to show up and attend those and speak out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banco.
Paul Lund, Hopeland, good evening. There's a lot of catchphrases being tossed around in national dialogue, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the concern, I think, on a local level is you hear about diversity, but if someone's religious upbringing leads them to conclude that God created man and woman, and there is biological fact around that, or if you question whether man can get pregnant, the response is you're being violent against the trans community. So it feels like there's a double standard when it comes to diversity, so I just wanted to put that out there. Secondly, I want to make sure that I'm listening better and I'm prepared to learn when I come here, and I think having listening going both ways is important. The last meeting, I asked a question that had already been asked once before by a concerned mother, and that is district policy, when it comes to if a child decides that they want to change their pronouns and their mode of dress, even their records at the school, do you have a policy as to whether the parent is informed? I know that in 2018, the state had transgender policy, which said that you have no affirmative duty to inform a parent, means you don't have to inform them, doesn't mean you shouldn't or can't inform them. If you don't have a policy on that, is it pretty much up to each school and administrator to make a call as to whether a child's parent should be or shouldn't be informed, in something as serious and as life-changing as changing genders? The last thing I just want to bring out, you're probably well aware that we've fallen to 16 in our education standards from four, and at four, we weren't doing a pretty good job at reading, writing, and arithmetic anyway, with in 2019, eighth graders, 57% of them were below proficiency in reading, for example. So, two things on that. First, it's hard to trust that you're going to do the sex ed pieces and the anti-racist pieces, and you're going to do it justice when it seems that education is failing at the most central subjects, history, math, science. So you could see why we'd be skeptical about turning over to government schools. The handling of something is delicate, as there are sexual and romantic feelings. So, and the last thing I would say is the other concern, the reason we fell so sharply is that we are one of the quote-unquote "blue states" that locked down so severely, and I want to know what the basis of that lockdown, I heard it was because of asymptomatic spread was a real threat, but even the W, the World Health Organization has come to the conclusion, it's very rare, and they knew about it then, and they knew masks didn't work, and it was still foisted on our children. Learning loss, social, emotional disturbance, you guys got a lot of things to fix. And as far as the state, last thing is you suggested we go to Trenton, but Trenton has bills around education transparency that are stalled. Assembly Coughlin was approached about finding, supporting, finding support for these bills to combat the learning loss, to recover seven years equivalent learning loss over these past three years. And it was shelved by, I think, Patricia, a Democrat who is the head of the Committee on Education. So with that, my first, most important question, what's the policy concerning parents if a child decides they're not the gender of their birth?
Do you have any other questions? We'll answer them all when you're done.
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bush?
I feel like I ended up lecturing you all, and we're back in law school, not that I'm qualified to be a law professor necessarily, but I'll just say that, I've told you this before, that school districts are creatures of statute. Obviously, we are responsible for enforcing the Constitution, both the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Okay.
And you used the term "serious and life-changing" to describe someone's gender identification.
No, the road, the path that could lead to in actually being affirmed, because it's very affirmation-happy APA and counseling and so forth.
Mr. Lund, I'm just going to stop you right there. Your time is up. You had asked your questions.
Yeah.
You asked a question, Mr. Bush.
Okay. I hear that.
So we want to get an answer to your question. Let me just explain that I don't profess to know every aspect, because I don't think any lawyer does, but there's, we're potentially moving, and this is similar to a child, and again, I don't want to get into too much detail here, but the gender, the gender of a child is obviously something that is a very private and, you know, serious matter, similar, for example, to a child's pregnancy. So there are some circumstances where, no matter what it says in the word "policy," guidance counselors may not share information about something as, like a pregnancy, for example, with a parent. There are some circumstances, I'm not talking about all, and you and I are not talking about any specific set of facts, we're talking about this theory, where if it comes up in a conversation, should the parents be notified? And I'm telling you that there is a progressing body of law, Mr. Harris, I didn't say progressive body of law, if he's here, I don't even know if he's here anymore, but a progressing body of law, I'm sorry, you're blocked right now, I couldn't see, which is, which is beginning to suggest that there are some things that are so personal to a child that it may actually go beyond a parent's right to know, because there have been some stories in the news over the years about, for example, the abuse that children have taken at home as a result of certain information that was revealed from school officials. So this is a very complicated area, and just because there's not a policy on it specifically, it's one of those very fact-sensitive matters where we have to look at the child's privacy rights and what those privacy rights are. As you know, a lot of that is in flux even at the federal level right now, with questions about what this Supreme Court intends to do with some of its emerging majority. So I can't answer for you anything other than to say, I would not advise the board to take any further steps on its policy with respects to, you know, its child's gender, because at this time, you know, it needs to be able to be as flexible as necessary to accommodate the facts that are before it. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I know just one other point that Mr. Lund made was about, you know, the shutdown with COVID and everything like that, you know, and this is just me speaking personally from my point of view, you know, in the new world that we do live in, everything has become a political football. It seems whatever side of the aisle you're on, it was either real, it wasn't real, but I know this board and the administration at the time when COVID first, you know, hit this country, you know, sat on a task force, and we did follow the CDC guidelines, and we had nothing more in our mind but the utmost concern for the safety of our students and our staff and our community. So that's why we did what we did. Nobody has a crystal ball. Looking back at it, like I said, we relied on the professionals to tell us what to do. I'm not a doctor, I'm a recreation director. If somebody from the CDC says, "This is the way I think you should attack this," that's what I'm going to do, just like when I go to my doctor. Doctor tells me, looks at my symptoms, tells me this is how we're going to treat it, I'm going to take his word for it, he's the professional. But I think that's what this Board of Education and what the administration did.
Good evening, everybody. John Vertaric Woodbridge. I believe last week, Mayor McGravey, I mean, McCormick sent a letter to the Ross Street School 11 community, because of 94 units that's supposed to be next door over here to the, with this community. I think that's not just a community, it's a Woodbridge Township. I think I want to kind of say thank you to all you people, Dr. Mr. Minnow here, school board, anybody that's involved in it, speak against it. But most important, being mayor of a town, you've got a lot of different things, like Mr. Mulnar, he's one department, there's a lot of departments, but you people on the school board, you've got a most important thing that anybody in the town, anybody's got to, your job is to make sure the children, of children, not sanitation, not parking department, not regulation department, just children. And I'm kind of a thank you, and I want to, I'm really impressed that you, not impressed, but at your job, and I want to thank everybody, you people stood up finally, and you said you do not agree that's good for the location, that's good, that's for children. We got to take care of the children. Anything else doesn't make sense, makes sense, but that's not important. And again, not to build those 94 units, I hope it sends our example to the rest of the town, the rest of the state and the country, because you cannot put the children in danger. And I spoke before, and I will say it again, I think that was a bad decision to build those units over there, next door, because safety of the children. But again, we have to realize it, it's going to be a big city, big town. So I want to just thank you, everybody that took interest in it, and finally, I want to say stood up to administration, but openly you said that you don't agree with them, and that's very important. But again, we talk about our schools, we talk about schools 4 and 5, that you spent $2.5 million to build a new school on the Road Avenue, and of course, mayor says that we don't own the property, when we didn't own the property, you said we don't spend, we don't own the property. My question is, where did those $2.5 million go spent on? And again, how could you spend that kind of money on a property to design the school that you don't own? And most important, I don't know, do you know who owns the property? Could you answer to me? That's the number one. The question is, where did that $2.5 million go, design of the school, I believe, not to clean up, not to anything else? And again, school 14 in Ford's, supposed to be closed, I believe, and tore down, that's a school property, and what is your plans to do this land with it, after you tear a school down or you close a school down? And again, we went at quite a few years ago, many years ago, I believe we closed half a dozen schools or more, and we said we don't need them, we will not, we're not going to need them, and we were wrong. You will need, maybe you close the school today, but leave it side open, in the future you may have to build another school. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's all your questions, Mr. Vertaric?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so for the first question, the $2.5 million, Mr. Wolfman, would you be able to answer that?
Mr. Vertaric, as you said, that money was used for the design and planning for the potential school that was going to be built. We needed to start that, have time to ensure that we make all of our time deadlines. So you want to correct in that, that was designed and planned?
Can I put one thing into it? The design was $2, I mean, designed $2.5 million, the whole project was supposed to go $35 million. You talk about 8% of the budget was just to design the school?
It includes design and permitting, things like that.
How you did?
Mr. Vertaric, I'm not, we're not going to have the back of it.
Okay, okay.
You asked a question, where the money went.
Right, okay.
And I'll explain it to you.
Thank you.
Your second question was school 14 in Ford's. Dr. Massimino, still?
I'll be candid, Mr. Vertaric, I don't like the idea of ever losing schools. I think with the changes that have gone on in our township, I think we've seen increase in population across the board, you know, to Mr. Maris's point earlier, anytime we can keep any student in district, in any keep any student in district, of, of, in any program, that's always the goal. So, I have spoken with the board, we are looking at potential options for school 14. You know, I don't want to go into too much more depth, because I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the board in, in great detail about it, but it is something that I, I think is worth exploring in terms of what that looks like, keeping that as a school, as our property. Obviously, there would need to be some, some serious reevaluation, you know, and I'm not a, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, so I would absolutely defer to, to the experts on that, but I, I think it's a worthwhile discussion, because we do have a structure there, a property use hours, and I think we need to look at it and see how we can potentially leverage that to, to work to our advantage as a district. So, it's a conversation that has begun, and I think we need to continue to have as a, as a board and as an administration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Messina. I think the original plan that was on the table going a few years back, that that property of the school was to be knocked down, was going to be a park, it was dedicated to being a park, but as Dr. Messina mentioned, you might be looking down the road for another, another plan. Anybody else in the public like to speak tonight? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion?
Have a motion, and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.